Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the June 4th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. I will be chairing the meeting today and for the first time, I call the meeting to order. First up is to enter into the record that I am receipt of a memo from Chair Hagan regarding his absence today. He is representing the county, traveling with the EDC Global Delegation. We wish him safe travels and a speedy return. Next, we're going to have the pledge and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers. Commissioner, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good morning. For everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh heavenly Father, I come to you today thanking you for the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, that they were celebrating unity in your name. I also, Father, ask as we have already entered into hurricane season that you would attack Hillsborough County as you've done over the years. Lord, I ask a special blessing for this meeting, the board members, the leadership, and all of our employees, and especially our first responders. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Thank you. Today, we have one special recognition which will be presented by Commissioner Cameron Sapeta.
Thank you and good morning. Would the following individuals please join me at the podium? Mr. Hung Mai, a leader in the local Asian American Pacific Islander community. Representing the Philippine community, Jose Omeela. Representing the Vietnamese community, Phuang Mai. Sunny Doan from the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Tampa Bay. Representing the Taiwanese community, Anna Lam. Ben Min and Mint He from the Sun Coast Association of Chinese Americans. And from the Tampa Mayor's Asian American Pacific Islander Council, Marie Bun Anderson. Good m- and Jenny Chang. From the NAAAP Tampa. Ms. Jenny Chang.
Good morning, everyone. Asian Pacific American Heritage Month was first established by the United States Congress in 1978, honoring the contributions Asian Pacific Americans have made in the sciences, arts, industry, government, and commerce. It originally originated, encompassed, also encompassed the first 10 days of May, but in 1992, Congress extended the observance to include the entire month of May. Hillsborough County is enriched by its large population of Asian Pacific Americans whose origins include Cambodia, China, India, Indonesia, Japan, North and South Korea, Philippines, Singapore, Thailand, and Vietnam. Their contributions are widespread and significant. Although we are recognizing this occasion retroactively, I'm honored to celebrate these people and their diverse cultures with this proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities possess deep roots in the United States, the state of Florida, and Hillsborough County; whereas Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans contribute to the county's vibrant diversity, greatly expanding the region's prosperity and enriching residents' lives every day by sharing ideas, customs, and wisdom. Whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month is observed during May to recognize the valuable influences Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans have made in all areas of life, including government, business, arts, and sciences, medicine, education, and law enforcement. And whereas more than 77,000 Asian American and Pacific Islanders heroically serve in the armed forces, and their stories, along with many others, have helped build a stronger, safer, and more prosperous country. And whereas Hillsborough County wishes to bring attention to and condemn Chinese Communist Party infiltration and influence directed at the Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander American communities, while also making space to create joy, healing, education, and celebrations for the richness of their cultures. And whereas the Hillsborough County is committed to providing comprehensive support that is equitable and welcoming to all people, whereas Hillsborough County is proud to celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and commemorate the essential contributions, advocacy, and sacrifices made by all Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare May 2025 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to recognize the achievements by Asian, South Asian, and Pacific Islander Americans, further demonstrating the importance of cultural diversity and unity, executed this fourth day of June 2025." Mr. Mai, thank you for everything you've done for our county. Would you please introduce our guests and speakers? And I do believe you have, may have something else for us to show.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, the board. Thank you, Bonnie, and you know, Christine. Every year, we get bigger and we get, you know, more people show up, you know, here. I would like to invite Linda Yang. She represent for her mong, you know, community, and I forgot to. I'd like to invite Ken Tran. He are the, he with the pork and he Asian, you know, veteran. And I'd like to invite, you know, Nguyen Ho. Come up in the podium. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. The Congress, like you said, you know, by public law, 102 that 450, hey designated the month of May each year as the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Because the May is channed pack, you know, with the agenda, so we move to June. Thank you for the board. Thank you, you know, Commissioner Sapeta, to spearhead on that. In Hillbilly County, we got 5%, you know, now with AAPI population to find a second homeland in our below country. This month, we honor the proud legacy of American Asian and Pacific Islander to our contribution, the vast consolation of the national triumph. We are woven into the fabric of the republic, reminding us that American spirit is one of the resilient, independent, and relentlessest, pursuing of freedom and opportunity. You probably don't realize, one of the top, you know, nation company is owned by a Chinese immigrant, and his company is supply over 50% of the air conditioning refrigerant they located in our backyard. Mr. Man company, a humbly with over a billion dollar, you know, revenue, and he quietly working in the background. We are not flashy like other, but we are productive, you know, citizen. That company is located right here in Hillbilly County, supply more than 50% of refrigerant in the whole United States of America, and he got 13 plant all over the continent. We thank you, Commissioner, for recognize and program May. Every year, as the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we encourage all Americans to learn more about those AAPI heritage, to observe this month as the appropriate, you know, program and activity. 50 years ago, you don't know, you know, pha ơ. 50 years ago, you don't know, you know, where dim sum may. So now, we got united to that, and some of the America, a friend of mine, every time I ask, where you want to go? He say, oh, I want to have pha ơ, which is a Vietnamese, you know, tradition. So with that, I'd like to introduce a few people. They want to make a comment, which is, let, let get Vivian with the Philippine community first, and you limit to one minute.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners, Asian American Pacific Islanders, officers and members, and distinguished guests. My name is Vivian Furigai Dudgeon. I have the honor of serving as the Senior Vice Chairman and Business Executive Director of the Philippine Cultural Foundation Incorporated, or the PCFI. We are proud nonprofit organization based here in Tampa Bay area, uniting 19 Filipino-American member organizations under one strong and vibrant umbrella. It is with deep gratitude and honor that we accept this proclamation on behalf of the PCFI in celebration of the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Thank you for recognizing the vital contribution of the AAPI community in Hillsborough County. This month is a time for celebration, a time to honor the journeys of those who came before us, to reflect on the rich diversity that unites us, and to embrace the many cultures that strengthen our shared community. At PCFI, we work very hard to preserve and promote Filipino culture through music, dance, art, and education. We do this not only to keep our heritage alive, but to pass it on to and inspire the next generation to stand proudly in who they are and where they came from. This proclamation is a powerful reminder that cultural heritage plays a meaningful role in shaping our collective future. We are proud to be part of Hillsborough County that values inclusion, history, and the spirit of community. Thank you once again, Board of Commissioners, for this honor. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you. Mary Ben.
Mary Ben.
My name is Mary Ben Anderson, and I am Filipino-American. Emphasis on the American because we are all Americans. I am the Chair of the City of Tampa Mayor's AAPI Council. We represent the Asian community in Tampa and Hillsborough County. We are honored and grateful for your recognition of the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month as our forefathers before us, the first Filipinos that came as part of an exhibition of the Trade Center, the first Chinese who helped build the railroad in the Great West. We want to remember and celebrate them because without them, we would not be here. More importantly, we impart to our young, such as Sunshine, our Miss Asia-Pacific Islander Pageant winner for 2025, that our legacy is our youth, where we share our heritage. We share, celebrate our diversity, equity, inclusion, and allyship. And we welcome you to join us in trying all the various Asian dishes and Asian restaurants in the community. I guarantee you'll love it, and thank you once again.
Thank you, Mary Ben. The Vietnamese community, pho.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Mai Dong. I'm the Director of Advertising and Public Relation of the Vietnamese Community of Tampa Bay. I am a Vietnamese by birth and an American by choice. 50 years ago, my husband came here as a child refugee from Vietnam, and nine years later, he served in the U.S. Air Force, trying to give back. Nearly 20 years later, I came here as a refugee as well, on an airplane. My father, magistrate of the Supreme Court of Republic of Vietnam, was in prison by the communists for eight years. We came here for freedom, and we are thankful for America to welcome us. And today, we have a thriving, happy, successful community contributing to America. Thank you for welcoming us. Last but not least, I want to thank you all, public servant. My late father was a public servant, and I know that public service is a very noble calling, and we thank you.
This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Man, representing Chinese community.
It is honored to be here today, especially at this special time, you know, when you watch the TV, watch the news, everybody talk about China, 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 all the congressman, senator, president, everybody talk about China, China, right? So, you know, I can tell you, I'm number one, honored to be here. Number two, you know, what I helped build my company, it only can happen in America. And I build a, I would call this a American dream. We, I come from 30 years ago, and I would build from nothing to where we are today. I can tell you, every two household repair air conditioning, use our refrigerant instead of Florida. You know, this remarkable success only can happen if a country give us opportunity to have evil playground and a free business environment. Even though there are some kind of hiccups between U.S. and China, and I think we as Chinese Americans are part of America, and we are here to stay. We're here to contribute our culture, our wisdom, and our hard work to success of America. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Anna Lam. I am Vietnamese-American, and I am a council of the Mayor's Asian American Pacific Islander Council and the Community Engagement Committee. So on behalf of our committee, I would like to extend our deepest gratitude for this proclamation. Honoring AAPI Heritage Month, your recognition not only celebrates our contributions, but also underscores the strength of our diverse and united community. Thank you for your continued support and for being a part of this meaningful celebration. Together, we honor our past, celebrate our present, and inspire future generations. Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, I want to interview Jenny Chang.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jenny Chang Holcomb. I am the President of the Asian American Professionals of Tampa Bay Chapter. I'd like to say thank you to all our public servants here and everyone else standing here representing for the Mayor's City of Council. To be a part of this beautiful city, part of what our group does is we represent the professionals in the city of Tampa. And part of that is building not only what we know about Asian culture, but also the importance of what we do in the professional area with businesses and commerce and such. So it's all intertwined, and I'm looking very, very forward to not only the fact of recognizing today as an important day, but also for the future of City of Tampa Bay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Before we accept the proclamation from Commissioner, I would like to ask if any organization would like to present a gift to all the Commissioner and the county staff, you know, coming up. And then after that, I'll bring back all the pictures, yeah. If you notice, we the only one, we the only organization to present the gift to the board and, and, and the county admin.
Can you send a very special gift, a book that talk about our history and also a conical hat? This is the representative of Vietnam. Oh, sorry.
You want to hand it out, did you?
Yeah, yeah. Our community bring a very small gift to represent our culture. This is a conical hat. Generation of Vietnamese grow up wearing this, going to school, going to work. So it's a token of our appreciation to the city. Thank you.
Sorry, the board, sorry, board member, we take a little bit, you know, longer than I expected because.
Did everybody get one?
Wow.
Okay.
Okay. So are we ready for the picture?
Thank you so much. He's so precious and awesome. And Mr. Mai, would I like to present you with this proclamation? And thank you so much for all that you do for our county, and I know we're going to be passing out some other ones as well for the other, so.
Okay.
And.
Korea, where? Korea.
Come up here.
Okay.
I think it's picture time.
You. You need one.
Who's last two?
Awesome. So we'd like to take a photo right now, and anybody you'd like to be in the photo?
We invite all of you come up in the podium to take the photo with the board of county commissioner and the leaders staff, yeah. So you will notice that this year, we have more people coming up here, coming up here, please. Hey, the, the Iga people coming up too.
They go along in the front. We'll go in the back. Is that good?
And up here, and three, two, one. And one more. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We're dying.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank all of you for joining us today and everything you do to help make Hillsborough County the best county in Florida. Thank you.
Everyone, do the same pictures outside and let me go back to the table.
Thank you so much.
For those of you following along, I'm 100% certain that Chair Hagan would say I lost complete control of my first, my first meeting, but if you know Mr. Hung Mai, you know, I let him do his thing. So Bonnie, would you kindly review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. Good afternoon. It is hard to follow that, or good morning. We have several items for time certain today. The first one is item F1 at 10 o'clock by Commissioner Bowles. This is to receive a special appearance by Thomas Mans, President and CEO of Feeding Tampa Bay, to provide an annual report. Item E1 at 10:15 is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their activity report for 2025. Item E2 at 10:30 is a special appearance by Santiago Carata, President of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their activity report for 2025. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
For those of you following along, I'm 100% certain that Chair Hagan would say I lost complete control of my first, my first meeting. But if you know Mr. Hung Mai, you know I let him do his thing. So Bonnie, would you kindly review the changes to the agenda?
Yes. Good afternoon. It is hard to follow that or good morning. We have several items for time certain today. The first one is item F1 at 10 o'clock by Commissioner Bowles. This is to receive a special appearance by Thomas Mans, president and CEO of Feeding Tampa Bay, to provide an annual report. Item E1 at 10:15 is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, executive director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their activity report for 2025. Item E2 at 10:30 is a special appearance by Santiago Carrada, president of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their activity report for 2025. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wustel and a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
The board will now go into public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside 45-minute time period for public comment. Speakers may sign up at the BOCC meetings either in person or virtually by completing the form at hcsl, hcfl.gov/speakup, up to 48 hours prior to the meeting, or in person the day in the lobby of County Center. Sign up for public hearings and public comments closes at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. First up is Ellsworth Williams in person, followed by Denise Herndon in person.
Make sure I gaze at.
Thank you.
Who starts this?
Thank you, county commissioners, the chair, and my fellow veterans, Josh and Commissioner Sepeta and Dusso. First, want to mention that June is PTSD month, so make sure we wear a PTSD month. When I'm up here for two reasons. One is to reflect on my event I had last in Memorial called Special Memorial Ceremony for Those Lost Veterans and First Respondents to Suicide. I want to thank support from Commissioner Sepeta. I also want to thank Commissioner Warso for being there again. I appreciate that. I'm still hurting for the game until, until, I still appreciate you being there. It was truly a bipartisan event. When I buy, when I mean bipartisan, I don't just mean bipartisan shit, but we had, we had somebody from Penales, we had somebody from Hillsborough as well. So when it comes to veteran, that's really important. I also want to thank the director of Florida Department of Veteran Affairs. He was there and he actually elevated how we had them. You need to sit to recognize veterans who die by suicide as well. Why I'm here, though, is June is also recognition for Alzheimer Month. Veterans Council of Veterans is hosting our conference on the 14th of June. And one of the things we're going to address is dementia. Over 12% of veterans in our county have dementia. This event that we're having, and it's our second one, we're trying to highlight the importance of aging, our aging veterans. There's over 719 veterans in, in Florida that are over the age of 65, and they're almost like forgotten and we're not talked about. And we need to, we're going to start trying to talk about it and start getting them some assistance. This conference that I'm having on the 14th of June will be, we'll have the Florida Department of Veteran Affairs, we have the Veterans Affairs there, we have Hillsborough Veteran Services County there, we have the Bay Area Legal, and importantly, we have the community. Again, it's about addressing the resources. First, we identify the resources that are in the community to help these elderly veterans out. After we identify the resources, then we'll start identifying the gaps. I want to just, I just wanted to invite all of you guys to this event. And for this event as well, all veterans, military, and family members, this event is free. A donor has, has actually reached out and said, we're paying for all the veterans' families to be attend. So please let them know about that. You should have the document in your, in your hand, and also make sure people in the community know about this. Thank you very much and have a great day.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Next up is Dean Herndon, followed by Matthew Richter virtually.
I'm Denise Herndon. I've lived in Hillsborough County almost 33 years now, was raised on the East Coast, Broward County, but for six years, I lived in California from the age of 16 to 22. When I left in 82, I lived in a small town called Rural Grande. It was San Luis Obispo County. Then they were starting to not serve water at restaurants because water was getting so bad in California in 82 concerning the drinking water for the South Projects of Hillsborough County. We need to continue whether or not we have a lot of rain to have sprinkler restrictions. We need to do more because we're going to start running out of water the way California has, even though we're surrounded by water unless somebody starts doing desalination. We need to start restricting water now before it becomes an issue. When Sherlene Hammond lived next door to me, she started inviting me over to her house for coffee in the morning, which I don't drink coffee. And I could only go over there when I wasn't working as a respiratory therapist. All of a sudden, I have a personal quart-size half and half. Nobody else could drink it and use it in their coffee, even Wayne Hammond. The last time Sherlene Hammond allowed me to have coffee with Wayne Hammond in the morning was when he come out and he asked me, does this prescription drug, you know a little bit of medicine, have you ever heard of it making you forget you had sex? He said this in front of Sherlene. I don't know of any prescription drug that would do that. Other stuff does. And then after that, Sherlene Hammond asked me to come over and have coffee, and I says, I'll be over there first thing in the morning. Oh, Wayne doesn't like you. If he didn't like me so much, why did he ask a personal question like that? And this was when Sherlene Hammond, I realized in 2014 in July, she was putting my bottled water, because I have very bad well water, can't even cook with it, putting caffeine in that and caffeine in the half and half that was only for me because I was a special person. Sherlene Hammond is part of hacking into my medical records, and she, I hope, isn't doing anything to Wayne Hammond because I know she was drugging him back then. Something needs to be done concerning this dark web reeb, Sherlene Hammond. Please listen to what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Matthew Richter virtually.
Madam Chair, Matthew Richter did not check in.
Thank you. Next up is David Hill in person, followed by Tom Corbert.
Thank you very much. First, I want to apologize for not bringing a gift, but I was glad that we were here to witness that. That was fantastic. I come with a selfish request. My name is David Hill, and for the past eight months, my daughter's been asking me, when can we go back home? And the reason why is because I live on Snead Place in Carrollwood Village, where my family and 11 of our neighbors suffered major flood damage during Hurricane Milton last October. And as you're all aware, that's not a coastal community. That's pretty foreign. I know you're all familiar with stormwater complaints, but this isn't just another complaint. This is about a neighborhood that's been raising the same issue since 2017, and it still doesn't have a straight answer. Let me say this clearly. Our street becomes a retention pond every time it rains, and that's not an exaggeration, as my neighbor Robin could attest to. County records, your own, show more than a dozen work orders, photos, videos, and resident reports spanning eight years regarding the same issue that has caused the flooding in our neighborhood. What's most frustrating is in the flooding itself. It's the pattern of deflection. Hillsborough County tells us it's private property. The HOA tells us it's county easement. The Water Management District says it predates their permitting. We've spent nearly a year chasing accountability as we rebuild our homes, and all we've gotten is finger pointing. At a recent public meeting, some of our residents left feeling ignored and patronized. That doesn't just damage trust, it deepens the sense that no one's coming to help. Let's acknowledge what's true. The official county findings confirmed a silted, unmaintained ditch is a likely contributor to the flooding. Flood maps show our homes fully submerged in 100-year storm scenario, and hurricane season just started, as Commissioner Myers referenced at the opening of the meeting. We're not asking for miracles, we're asking for ownership. We need one lead agency to take point, we need a path to resolution, and we need it before the next storm hits. Because when no one takes responsibility, everybody suffers. But when one person does step up, that's when momentum turns. Commissioner Hagan, who's not here today, his office has been very responsive to our needs, and we're grateful for the support of his staff, specifically Glory and Richard. But now we're asking this board to go one step further. Assign a point person or agency, start a formal inter-agency review, and help us make sure this doesn't happen again to us and other communities. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all you do for our community.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hill. Next up is Tom Corbert in person, followed by Andhar Robin Alberto in person.
If you could ask him, my, my aides are going to come get his info. Sir, my aides are going to come and get your info if you can just stand by, too.
Go ahead, sir.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, good morning. My name is Tom Corbert, and I live in Hillsborough County up near the university. In the early 90s, I became a community activist. My passion was juvenile justice. I got involved with the Juvenile Justice Work Group, which became the Juvenile Justice Council, which I was a charter member. At the first year anniversary, Commissioner Phyllis Pazansky, who chaired the council and the county commission, named seven movers and shakers in Hillsborough County. Five of them were public servants. Julie Holt, who recently retired, Elvin Martinez, who was the dean of the House, Sheriff Heinrich, Chief Judge Dennis Alvarez, and the state attorney, Judge Harry Coe. There were two private citizens on it, and I made that list. I had the honor of being listened to and taken seriously when I gave input. And I was proud when Elvin passed the legislation that created the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice. And I watched the governor, Lawton Childs, sign that legislation. I stepped down after that because I accomplished what I set out to do. Today, Sherri Wood, the president of the North Tampa Dems, asked me to be the legislative tracker for this commission. And I said yes based on my history. I was a little appalled at what's going on with the Affordable Housing Act. I don't understand why $8 million has been taken from it for the last three years, or why at the last meeting you were discussing doing it again. But it was proposed to rescind the act. One of the excuses given was you're getting that $709 million grant from HUD. 56% of that goes to affordable housing. But that is for disaster relief, is to be used on hurricane recovery for the damages caused by the storm. You know, you all need to rethink that. You're here to serve the people of Hillsborough County. And beyond that, I don't know what to say. But there are voters watching this. But for those of you who are listening, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
And thanks for honoring the special guest you had this morning. I served in the Air Force in the Orient, so I again thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Andhar Robin Alberto, followed by Mark Millay. Both in person.
Good morning, and thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Robin Andhar, and I also live on Snead Place. And I'm here to ask you, as my friend David did, for a permanent solution to the recurring floods in our neighborhood, more specifically Snead Place, Carrollwood Village. Again, this is something that many of you have heard over and over again because it's a recurring problem. Even though we bought our properties in a no-flood zone area, eight months ago, we were victims of Hurricane Milton. Our homes were flooded, with many of us having to evacuate, with some of us, or some of, some of our neighbors still not being able to come back. We miss David kids running in the neighborhood. Eight months, paying taxes, mortgage insurance, utilities, and still not being able to return to their homes. Just think about that. Let that sink in, please. They were flooded, not being able to return, and here we are, eight months after, and already in the hurricane season. And we all have seen, all we have seen is meetings, studies, excuses, denials, and finger pointing to everybody else, but no concrete solution to a problem that can happen again any day. Any day can happen again. When I say that Milton forever changed our lives, it's true. You see us looking up at the sky at the threat of any small rain. You see us taking videos, checking the drainage, really worried. This is called trauma. Aside from the millions of dollars that we have spent to rebuild our homes, we suffer from trauma. We've been traumatized. We can't put a price tag on traumas. The way I view it as a layperson, just from the street, we have a contract that I signed, and you set the rules of that contract. I follow the rules of the contract, I follow your directions, and I pay religiously for the services that I expect from, from the county. I'm okay with doing my part of the deal. I'm not complaining about it. As a matter of fact, I can do more if I have to. I'm concerned about you guys doing your part of the deal, which is delivering the services for which we pay as citizens. This is a no-flood zone area in which we bought our houses, and we go home, we go to sleep worried. If there is a rain, what's going to happen? We don't have the option of saying, you know what, I spent $200,000 in my house, I'm not going to pay my taxes for the next 40 years. We don't have that choice.
Thank you for your comments, sir. We appreciate it.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next up is Mark Millay in person, final speaker.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Mark Millay. I'm really not really completely prepared to present my issues and concerns this morning, but I just wanted to formally say, hey, I will return, and I will have some documented stuff. My experiences within Hillsborough County dates back into the 80s. So from the 80s until 2025, there's been involvement with crimes, drugs, abuse, neglect, misuse of jurisdictions, interactions with healthcare organizations, misdiagnosis, malpractice, negligence, concerns for Department of Juvenile Justice, concerns for youth advocacy, all different kinds of things, interactions with the University of South Florida. So I'm going to try to put a better, prepare a better speaking based on my life experiences within, address those concerns, and put them in presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. This closes public comment. Can we please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
I believe we move on to B1.
Yes, we have a few minutes before our 10 o'clock time certain, so we can go to item B1. This is to approve the modification of the interlocal agreement with the city of Tampa regarding water and wastewater service boundaries. Lisa Ray with Water Resources will present this item.
Thank you, commissioners. Lisa Ray, Water Resources Director. I thank you for your time this morning. We are asking for your approval on the modification to the interlocal agreement with the city of Tampa, which defines the water and wastewater service boundaries within unincorporated Hillsborough County, and to extend the term for an additional two-year period. Two years ago, we asked for another extension, which was granted, and we greatly appreciate it. At that time, our focus was to be on the purchase of the Palm River service area. However, over the last two years, as all of you are aware of, we have found that we have some challenges with our capacities in the South County area and would not be able to provide all of the services that are needed in this purchased area. We also have tremendous growth going on, and our resources need to be redirected to ensuring that the new water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant meet the needs of this fast-growing community. So this time in our extension negotiations, instead of focusing on a purchase, we will just work on cleaning up the boundary and also coming to a fair agreement on the costs for the services provided by the city of Tampa. And we are positive we will be able to accomplish that within this two-year window. So from the 80s until 2025, there's been involvement with crimes, drugs, abuse, neglect, misuse of jurisdictions, interactions with healthcare organizations, misdiagnosis, malpractice, negligence, concerns for Department of Juvenile Justice, concerns for youth advocacy, all different kinds of things, interactions with the University of South Florida. So I'm going to try to put a better, prepare a better speaking based on my life experiences within, address those concerns, and put them in presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, sir. This closes public comment. Can we please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wustel, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
I believe we move on to B1?
Yes, we have a few minutes before our 10 o'clock time certain, so we can go to item B1. This is to approve the modification of the interlocal agreement with the City of Tampa regarding water and wastewater service boundaries. Lisa Ray with Water Resources will present this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Lisa Ray, Water Resources Director. I thank you for your time this morning. We are asking for your approval on the modification to the interlocal agreement with the City of Tampa, which defines the water and wastewater service boundaries within unincorporated Hillsborough County, and to extend the term for an additional two-year period. Two years ago, we asked for another extension, which was granted, and we greatly appreciate it. At that time, our focus was to be on the purchase of the Palm River Service Area. However, over the last two years, as all of you are aware of, we have found that we have some challenges with our capacities in the South County area and would not be able to provide all of the services that are needed in this purchased area. We also have tremendous growth going on, and our resources need to be redirected to ensuring that the new water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant meet the needs of this fast-growing community. So this time in our extension negotiations, instead of focusing on a purchase, we will just work on cleaning up the boundary and also coming to a fair agreement on the costs for the services provided by the City of Tampa. And we are positive we will be able to accomplish that within this two-year window. I appreciate your time, and we ask for your approval. Thank you. And I can answer any questions if there are any.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, and thank you, Lisa Ray, for your overview of the wastewater and water. I'm going to move for approval of the item, and then I want to make a separate motion.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers and a second by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Do I just, oh, sorry. Please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
My other motion is to direct staff to investigate funding opportunities to purchase the Palm River Water and Wastewater Services area from the City of Tampa now and to program improvements. The county will continue to purchase services from the City of Tampa until the county extends services into the area at a later date. And this is still regarding Palm River area. And this is a project, we've been talking about this, I know when I joined the county...
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, in 1988. This is how far this is going back in trying to get water to the Palm River area. And I've been speaking with Director George to see how we can begin to look at how the county can purchase the Palm River Water and Wastewater Service. And they will bring back information to us before they do anything in reference of it. And George is here as the Director, and Lisa, well, Assistant County Administrator, I'm sorry, George. Lisa, the Director, we have an additional question.
So we have a new motion on the floor by Commissioner Myers, and a second by Commissioner Bowles. Commissioner Wustel, you're recognized.
Thank you. I don't know that I really understand the motion or that this motion even needs to be made, but I think either way that that's just something that when we progress to, it happens. What I would say is that, you know, Commissioner Cohen and I have dealt with similar situation in town and country, and I didn't know it at the time when I was still running four years ago. But basically, there's just a law that allows them, the cities, to do this. And what they do, so you know when you go in the community, is they charge the unincorporated area about 25% more. Is it still 25%? 25% more as like a convenience fee. Oftentimes, I know in town and country where there's like a very close hookup to our system where they live, and you know, it's a reasonable complaint, as why is their cost of living for that service 25% greater than the rest of the unincorporated area? And it's, I, again, I, so what, can you restate your motion?
The motion is... The motion is to direct staff to investigate funding opportunities to purchase the Palm River Water and Wastewater Services area from the City of Tampa now and to program improvements. The county will continue to purchase services from the city until the county extends service into the areas at a later date.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's fine. I think that we're doing that anyways. What I would say is, and I'll, George and Lisa, I'm going to, I'm trying to find it. I brought it up in my briefing, but somebody had emailed me. They definitely had experience in this field, because it was so technical. I frankly got kind of lost in what they sent me. But their argument was that the number that was presented was that they felt like the county was getting taken advantage of by the city on what the valuation was because the deterioration or erosion of the assets that are in place right now are so bad that they felt like the number presented to us was a move by the city to try and recapture their 25% losses that they're no longer going to have by being able to upcharge the unincorporated. I'm going to try and find it. I think it was over a year ago when you guys brought this up the first time. But I mean, their argument was, seemed pretty sound, so I'll try and find it and send it to you. But I'll support the motion just because I think, I think we're doing that anyways.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Bowles. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you. We do have a few more minutes. If Commissioner Cohen is ready, we can move to item F2. This is regarding directing the county attorney's office to draft amendments to the Hillsborough County trespassing towing immobilization rates ordinance.
I think I can handle this in four minutes. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, this is not a fee increase or anything like that. What it is, is asking the county attorney's office to work with code enforcement to bring back a draft ordinance that addresses changes required to comply with state law, including methods of payment and occupational licensing. If you remember, on methods of payment, this is so that people will be able to use credit cards. And, you know, this is part of a larger effort to crack down on predatory towing companies, but also to provide clear rules for all of the good actors that are out there. There are a lot of companies that are performing a very important service, and they are acting within the law, and this will make sure that our ordinance is consistent with everything that the state is doing. I do want to mention, this is not specifically related to the issue with the $250 immobilization charge. That is something I understand that our county attorney's office is working through in a judicial forum, but this is something that will allow us to bring back an ordinance that will clarify the rules and protect consumers. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for our approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Wustel. Commissioner Bowles, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to actually make an amendment to your motion, a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
I'd like to have legal also provide information and options that can strengthen the code enforcement ordinance to act as a deterrent and to encourage citizens from abusing the complaint process.
I'm certainly happy to include that in the motion.
Second, thank, since we only have two minutes left. Do we have processes for people who abuse systems here? If you call 911, you get put on a list of abusing the system. If you, fire alarm goes off too often, you have, there's a step-up process for that, that you're not addressing that. Same thing for burglar alarms, that kind of thing. This is possibly another way for neighbors to use the process against it and waste county resources and tax dollars where we have people that are going out there looking at unfounded problems. And I think that this is at least, while it may not be the most prevalent issue in there, it doesn't hurt to have it on the books, and can be another tool for our county, code enforcement officers to use as a deterrent.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent motion, Commissioner Bowles, and I'm happy to include that.
Excellent. So we have an amended motion by Commissioner Bowles, seconded by Commissioner Cohen? Is that correct?
I think it's still my motion that has accepted his...
A motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Wustel on F2 with the friendly amendment. Please record your votes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you. We can now move on to our item F1, which is a 10 o'clock time certain by the time Mr. Mans comes to the podium. This is to receive a special appearance by Thomas Mans, President and CEO of Feeding Tampa Bay, to provide an annual report. This is Commissioner Bowles' item. Commissioner Bowles, do you have anything to say first, or hear the presentation?
Good morning, Tom. How are you, sir? Thank you for coming in. Excuse me, thank you for coming in and giving us this report. Happy to hear what's going on with Feeding Tampa Bay. You guys do fantastic things in our community and love to hear where we stand today.
Thank you, and thanks, everybody, for having me, and we appreciate the opportunity. We wanted to cover, I think, two things today. We're in our new facility a year, of which you all were a principal investor. So we wanted to kind of give you a status of how that's going. I'll get to my slides in a moment, but I would tell you that probably our facility has exceeded our expectations. For those of you that don't know, we spent many years in research and design trying to build a community center that would benefit the entire community. We serve here in Hillsborough County, but as you know, people radiate across county lines, and so we serve a 10-county catchment area, and the facility has been everything that we had hoped it could be and more. This year, we'll expect to exceed 100 million meals provided in the community. That's the most we've ever done. Facility has allowed us to do that. Our neighbor services area, where we have a restaurant, a grocery store, partnerships, including the county, that work collegiately to provide services to our neighbors, will exceed 10,000 or has exceeded 10,000 visitors in the first year alone. The good news about that is that we're providing both food and resources together. We supported two hurricanes, which was quite an undertaking for us. As you all know, we built the facility to category five specifications, fully redundant generator capacity, so we were up before the storm, during the storm, and after the storm, making sure we provided resources to our community and made sure there was an appropriate, healthy, and safe food supply. We're already getting ready for the season now. We've brought in MREs in water in partnership with other, with FEMA and others. And then we've probably had over 100 to 125 different groups committing to use the facilities. As I mentioned, we wanted this to be a community facility. Hillsborough County held one of their fairs there, which was nice. We've had Operation Smile with kids getting dental care. We had 250, 300 kids getting dental care. We've had fundraisers, parties, marching bands, any number of community partners that have held their events there, all as a reminder to you, free to those who are in the nonprofit sector. Part of what we wanted to do was make sure that we lifted our nonprofit partners. This facility also houses other nonprofit partners who are resident on our campus, saving them rent from other facilities. We also have our warehouse space, so we partnered with Metropolitan Ministries, that we now took over their warehouse. They don't have to pay for the cost of doing it. So all of which, we talked to Ms. Wise, as well as the county commissioners about two and a half years ago, almost three years ago when we built this facility. We invite all of you, some of you have been out to visit, we appreciate that. We invite all of you to be, come and see what you invested in and what it's done for our community. So again, we want to say thank you. This facility was a $60 million investment by the community, in the community, for the community, and we want to make sure that everybody that put subsidy and funds in feels good about the investment that they made. So let me get to my presentation. We want to give you just a sense of what's happening in our community. I have some updated numbers from today, so I'll try and make sure that I work off of both. So first, if you don't know, we serve about a million folks plus in our catchment area across the 10 counties. And again, we understand you're Hillsborough County, but people come and go across county lines to obtain services. Importantly for you all to know, almost half of the folks in our community are struggling to make it economically. We rely on United Way's Alice Report, which we think is a good indicator of household and community health. And again, that suggests to us about half of every family is struggling to make ends meet. One of the questions we get often is about the unemployment rate. We pay far less attention to that than we do the average salary. So when you see the household survival budget, that's actually 96,000 now. United Way just came out with an updated number. And it's close to $129,000 a year just for any sort of budget that allows you to thrive. 16% of the folks in our community, kids in our community are living in poverty. I think you know all of this, but importantly, what we want to make sure is that we level set around what's happening in our community and what ultimately our responsibilities are as we seek to try and mitigate some of the challenges that families have. In Hillsborough County alone, we provided 30 million meals last year that has a retail value of close to $1 million. As you all know, we recover unwanted, unusable items in the retail sector and move them into our households and families. We support over 100 community partners, so pretty much everybody you know that's in the food space works with us and through us. One of the innovations that we're most excited about is we have 40 pantries inside schools in Hillsborough County today. That has had a significant impact on childhood behavior, education, outcomes, and family health and well-being. Many of you are familiar with backpack programs that are done often throughout communities. The reality is, this solution is much better. It connects families to the school. It connects children and their families to healthy foods. And it also ultimately is, it ultimately has driven better school attendance, better school performance, better attitude, better relationship between the school and the family. We offer nutrition education classes. We continue to try and make sure our community is healthier. We have Food RX programs, working with several different hospital and healthcare providers to make sure that the outcome of what we do creates healthier communities. And then finally, our job training program, which we are getting ready to graduate our second class out of Causeway Center, adds about $5.4 million based on EDC metrics in value every year. We graduate about 25 folks a class. As I said, we've just finished our second class. So as we start to move forward, we would tell you that, as we said the day we opened the facility, the building is just a building. What we do with it becomes what's important, how we use it to create better outcomes in our community. So as we start to expand our services, our ability to provide healthier food as we move forward becomes a significant part of what we're endeavoring to do. We want to make sure that everybody that wants or needs access to services can find a way and place to get those services. So we're also expanding our neighborhood services and partnerships. Remember, one of our fundamental concepts of change. One of the questions is asked most of us, most often of us, is, you're just giving people food over and over again. Are you just tying them to your care? One of the reasons why we designed the facility in the way that we did is because we agree. We think the long-term outcomes for our neighbors are important. In fact, we have a goal as an organization with the next five years of 50 cents on every dollar spent on mitigating or keeping people out of our care or pushing them into a place in which they are able to self-sustain. And so as we invest in that and move forward, that will be an area that we continue to support. We've also built a significant amount of capacity around our network. We've invested $2.5 million just in agency capacity. So the agencies we support don't always have the resources that they need. We try and make sure they can get those, so that's come in the form of freezers, coolers. We've provided probably a half dozen agencies with trucks to be able to go and secure food and move food around. So again, our goal is to make sure that not only does our facility do what it needs to do, but we also want to make sure that we are creating better capacity across our organization. Because as we think about where we want to head and what we think has to happen in order to be more efficient and effective, is sector collaboration. As some of you have heard from us, the food relief system, Feeding Tampa Bay, sees more people than all of the charities, because that's what will drive folks into the social services arena. We also partner with more organizations than any other charity because they're often connecting with the folks that we serve. What we want to see is that we continue to build and grow that partnership sector as we move along. All of us could agree our sector could be more efficiently and effectively run, and that's one of our obligations and opportunities as an organization. So the final thing that I'll say, as I wrap up my presentation today, if there are any questions. We are fully aware, as you are, of what's happening at a federal, a state, and local level and the challenges you all have in balancing budgets and managing the responsibilities. We would make sure, want to make sure that the commission understands that some of the proposed changes in policy may impact our community significantly. You're all aware of this. I just want you to know, we are too. We are endeavoring to make sure that wherever we can, we advocate and give voice to the concerns and/or issues that we think matter. We're not involved in politics. We're involved in policies. We want to make sure that folks understand the decisions that we're making. And we, as an organization, will do whatever we can to make sure that we step into the gaps that are created, if they are created, based on policy and legislation. So again, let me finish where I started. Thank you for your investment in our facility. We appreciate it very much. We're grateful for you to do that with us and for us, and thank you to your team, Ms. Wise, for all that you all did to make sure that this happened. With that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mans. I'm going to recognize you first, Commissioner Bowles, as this was your item. Commissioner Wustel?
Okay, thank you. Hi, Mr. Mans. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
That was a very beautiful story you just painted, and as you are probably well aware, I've been the hardest on nonprofits since I've got here, since all the revelations of almost a quarter billion dollars of property taxes have been doled out to them over the past 10 years, and it's a problem. Since then, I've just been trolling through every single organization's IRS 990s, such as I have yours, and my biggest concern with your organization, you hinted towards it, and I guess my, your mission, what is, what is your mission?
To build thriving communities today and for generations to come.
No, your mission should be to not have people reliant on the government for food. And you said that you're not a political organization, but your organization... And you said that you're not a political organization, but your organization sticks out to me the most because I have at least three letters from you, sent from your staff, of you advocating for every tax that's been brought forward. And I find that very concerning. I find that very concerning because your organization is heavily funded by federal, state, and local tax dollars. Do you agree?
No.
You don't agree, based on your IRS 990s?
Our annual budget's going to top out this year around 28 or 29 million dollars. We receive from the government free money none. We execute contracts. So if you look at our federal number on our 990, that is to distribute TFAP or USDA commodity foods. The federal government needs somebody to do that. Like any other vendor, we contract that service. So the bulk of what you would see in government funding is a contract or a fee for service. Most all of what we do in the community is supported by the funds donated by the community.
I disagree, just because of the amount of grants that are viewable to the public on your IRS 990s. They can go and review them yourselves. I guess-
Most of those are private or corporate. So there are individual philanthropy, corporate philanthropy, not government philanthropy.
Several of them, though, are receiving donations from USAID through the NED and then through different relative organizations and endowment funds like Fidelity. Fidelity, you're considering as a corporate fund, is one of your donors, right?
If Fidelity is one of our donors.
Fidelity is one of your donors, but Fidelity receives funds from the NED, and the NED, even though the Fidelity is a private organization, the NED is funded by Congress. It's just a route through of money. You consider that a private corporation, but it's still a flow-through from the feds. And I guess my concern for the public and everyone listening is that our mission should not be to continue to create more and more reliance, especially when I brought this item. I've done this, I've brought it up to many CEOs. Right now, we have three CEOs in the audience. I've brought it up to the other two already, and I would say their three, their three salaries are about $1.6 million a year. Yours alone, just from 2020, has gone from about 220. The last number I've seen was 345, but that was the end of 2023. And when I present to people that the CEOs of nonprofits are making several hundred thousand dollars a year, they tell me that I'm wrong and that can't be right, especially ones that are, in my opinion, the mission should be to reduce reliance, not create a community based off of our tax dollars. We're the government, that's our role to manage taxes. So I, I understand that the sentiment is that you want to be more involved, but your name is Feeding Tampa Bay, and I'm just worried that we're continuing to build more and more reliance when the average household median income in Hillsborough County is $80,000 a year for the household. And when we have CEOs that are heavily funded by the government through various different mechanisms, making upwards of four or five times the amount of the entire household, largely based off of their taxes, I just could get very concerned for our future and our family. So I hope that, I hope that your mission does resolve in the fact that you no longer have to exist because we should be trying to reduce government reliance. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Let me go back through your points one by one. First, we would disagree that we are funded by the government. Understanding your comments, that would be patently untrue, given the size and scope of our organization. Number two, please allow me to finish.
I will send you the information that you are heavily funded by the government through different or public organizations like Fidelity that receive money from the National Endowment for Democracy that is funded through USAID and the federal government. It's public information.
Sure. Please, feel free to send that to us, we appreciate it. Number two, we would agree that our objective as an organization is to move folks to self-sufficiency. What everybody can agree on, including the folks that we serve, is no one wants to be in our care. No one. No one gets up in the morning and says, I want to go to a food relief organization. We want to way out. It's one of the reasons why our theory of change was so important to us, that we built an entire neighborhood services so that we developed, not only when you come in for food, we want to make sure you get other resources that help you move out. So whether that's job training, whether it's access to education, other resources. We would agree with you, Commissioner, 1,000%. No one wants to be in our care, and we want to make sure that folks move out from there. My salary is public record. I run a really large organization. We're happy to put that on our website. We operate out in Sunshine. Whatever your views of that are, we understand, but we would not make an apology for it. We think it's appropriate, given the size and scope of our organization. I do not set my salary, my board does, but that's some decision that they would make. So again, we appreciate your thoughts and comments. From our perspective, our organization exists because there are needs in communities. We try and step into those needs as thoughtfully as we can and carefully as we can to make sure that we exist for public good. All of us would agree, if Feeding Tampa Bay didn't exist, that would be a good thing. But as we said when we built the new facility, we would say again, the good news is, the community helped us build the facility. The bad news is, we needed to build it that size. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I take you at your word that, that your funding doesn't generally come from government sources, but I have to tell you that, from my perspective, I can't imagine anything more important for government to do than to help people who cannot afford food to have access to it. And one of the things that I am the most concerned about right now is the cost of food because it is very, very onerous for people to afford to feed their families, and every one of us can see it when we go to the grocery store. It is, it is, you know, a real fact of life. And my, my question to you today, you've been doing this for some time, and you did it during COVID. You were giving out meals to people when they had nowhere else to turn. And I'm wondering if, to what degree the cost of food today is, is driving more people into your care, what you're seeing different today than, than say, five years ago?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Commissioner. I think there's a number that we would cite that comes through the report done by, by Mitre's group, the name escapes me, it'll come to me in a moment.
Tampa Partnership.
Thank you, that USF does every year, and they just issued a report that said, families are spending about 55, in our, in our care, about 55% of their household income on housing and transportation alone. You add food on top of that, and you get over 60 to 61%. That's really untenable for families to manage if you think about all the other basic expenses of a household. Food prices have risen and stayed persistently high. Whatever the factors for those are, we would suggest they're not likely to come backwards. So when you look at those three major expenses, that's really what we see is the challenge that families are facing. Basic affordable affordability, the length of transportation time to and from work, housing costs, whether you're in this county or another one, those are the challenges that we see families facing. As a percentage of folks in our care today, it is higher than it was during COVID. And then let me be clear about how we see that. The first 60 days, 65 days of COVID was, was an onslaught, right? It was a huge impact. Once things started to settle down, we saw about a 30% increase over pre-COVID. We have not ever really seen that go back down, and now we're seeing increases.
Isn't it, isn't it the case that most of your food actually comes from the grocery stores and the retailers themselves, who actually donate to you the, what goes on bought, once their, their business days are completed?
Yeah, our model is that probably 48 to 49% comes out of the retail sector, probably 20 to 25% comes out of the agriculture sector, and then we have other manufacturers and resources that provide that to us. And as you mentioned, the food that we pick up at all the different grocery stores are what they would say is not best suited for consumer purchase any longer, from their perspective, but they're perfectly good from a health and welfare standpoint.
Well, I, I just want to say again that I really applaud the work that you do. I think that it's a very, very important service to the community, and I think centralizing it under one umbrella in this new facility has proved to be a tremendous community asset. And I, I look forward to supporting it in the future. And thank you very much, Commissioner Bowles, for bringing this item.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, thank you so much for your presentation. As you know, I served underserved in District 3, and I can remember when you were on 50th Street in a little small warehouse, and people were coming there at 50th Street, and particularly you were helping a lot of the homeless individuals that need help. So Feeding Tampa Bay has been a part of our community to do what is right when people sometime don't know where they're going to get their next meal from. And the reason I say the next meal, because I'm looking at a report I just received yesterday from the school district and what you all did in 23, 2024. You have provided 7,976,369 meals to students. And we always say the students can't learn, and you have your pantries, if they don't have a meal, they don't have something to take home. And so I applaud you all for doing that. You're also working out in my community, you're working with Towanda, or you were working with, I should say, Grow My Givens. Progress Village community has changed somewhat. There are many immigrants that are out in the Progress Village area, along with the Black and Brown community, that are coming out there on Fridays to get food. So it is a great need that, how do we continue to help people who are still struggling, struggling today, just to be able to feed our families? We can sit around this, this dance because we have a paycheck coming in every week or every two weeks, but there are many families who do not know and don't have a paycheck coming in. In particular, as a mother, they want to make sure that their children have something to eat, and they shows up to Feeding Tampa Bay. And not only that, I look at how the county, our Sunshine Line, Jerry, is working with you, and I ask Jerry to work with you because people have contacted me saying, Commissioner, I can't get to Feeding Tampa Bay. We tried with heart, but they wanted too much money. And I said, Jerry, we got to work out something that, we still can feed people and get them there and get them back to their location, and we have excellent partnerships. That's what service is all about. And sometimes we lose sight of service because of salary. And I want to remind all of us, what a board does for their CEO or their president, that is their business because that CEO is providing services to our community, services that Hillsborough County government not, cannot provide, okay? And so sometimes we get caught up with the wrong, how, what we should do. Service is number one in our county. I always tell people that. When you lose sight of service, when you lose sight of service, you might as well call it quits for that particular day or the rest. And I want to thank you for the services that Feeding Tampa Bay is providing to our communities because you have warmed so many hearts, made so many families so very happy and their children happy. It is because of what Feeding Tampa Bay has done here in Hillsborough County, and you shared that through our region where you have other facilities and you are helping. Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I could comment on one point of what you said, the school pantries that we put in have been an enormous success, as I mentioned. We visited one with our board a couple of weeks ago, and the school that we were in that did the presentation reminded us that the teachers and the employees of the school were using the food bank, the food pantry there as much as neighbors were. And I think that always reminds me of who we're looking after. It's people in our community, it's friends, neighbors, people that are dedicated to their work, trying to find a way to, to still be teachers, right? And so we're pleased that that program has had as many benefits as it has.
Yes. And I have a list in my district right here that I have to speak with you and Bonnie to see how we can help these pantries going into the next school term, okay? Thank you.
And a nod to Chair Hagan. Commissioner Bowles, would you like to bring this in for a landing?
Sure. Absolutely. Again, Tom, thank you for coming, providing that. I think across the board, wherever our funding sources are coming from, I think that it's certainly a concern for everyone who's sitting here and in our administration as well. We're all have eyes to Tallahassee, to Washington, and to our constituents to do the best we can with the dollars that are coming in. And I think sometimes boards need to take a look at certain things and make the decisions that they need to, whether it's this board or the board that you are serving under. But kind of a bit of a nod to what Commissioner Whistler was getting at to some degree was, you talk, Feeding Tampa Bay has a policy, or at least a motto of disrupting the system that, can you, can you give just a little bit about that? Because I think part of what I saw when I did a visit was you had the grocery store, you had the cafe, and then you had another area that was set up for what should be for pharmacy services, clinicians, social services, and so on and so forth. I'd like to know where that is. I know that we were, that was only a few months ago, but can you give a timeline on how soon that that could happen that could really disrupt the service?
Yep.
Or the cycle that's out there?
Yep. So I commented a little bit, but let me be clear, more specific, and again, for this commission to know, Feeding Tampa Bay is one of the largest food relief organizations in the United States now. We're top tenants in size and scope. Again, some of that's due to the population, but some of this also due to the work that our community has done to support what we're trying to do. Number two is when we built this facility, there was no roadmap on any other food bank doing this. We were one of the first food banks to say, we're going to combine services with food. Most food banks are warehouses with a lot of food in it and folks moving in and out. We chose to say, there's got to be a different way to do this. You know, one of the things that happened to me in my own journey through this was understanding, we'll pass a billion meals provided since our inception this August, a billion meals. When I got to the food bank, we were doing 12 to 13 million meals a year. We're now doing, as I said, 100 million meals. But we're also aware that against a percentage of need, we're further behind. We've got to address that. And so that's where we started to think about, what does disruption look like? And disruption looks like figuring out how to co-locate services, how to make sure when everybody comes, anyone comes into our care, we address the other needs, resources that they have. And so we are already operating with clinicians on staff. We have two fully outfitted medical services rooms. We have three classrooms that offer classes to help people move out of other, educate themselves in order to move out of their circumstances. We have probably 20 different nonprofit partners who are on campus, everybody from Crisis Center to Metropolitan Ministries to Bay Area Legal Services and others, again, trying to make sure that when someone visits, the result of their visit is much more robust and that they're more likely to leave our care much more quickly. And so we have had a great year, but we only go as far as our resources take us, coming back to the question of funding. The community that funds us, we expend virtually every dollar we can right back into the community, so the more we are able to raise from our community partners, the more we'll be able to do. Year one, as I said, was a great success. We expect much more out of years two, three, four, and five as we grow this model. And then the goal from there is to move this concept and model out across our 10 counties so that we build a much more thoughtful structure as we move forward. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, I believe it does, but, and again, I think that there's certainly, obviously is a need. You know, I saw that certainly last year, and I've seen it throughout the community over my years of service, working in Hillsborough County with the fire rescue, you know, that there's a need out there. How we get to the goal is maybe a different question, different problem for another day, but I do appreciate you coming today and giving the presentation and updating us on all that.
Thank you for hosting, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mans, I'll conclude with my, my comments. I just wanted to say thank you. I'm not sure if you remember, back in 2012, I was very new to the food banking industry, and you were kind and compassionate and a great leader and mentor to me, and I appreciate, I appreciated you then, and I appreciate the work you're doing now. Thank you for coming today for your presentation and for fielding all of our questions.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to see you here, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Bonnie?
Need a motion to receive the report?
Thank you.
Do we have to have a motion?
You can, or you don't have to, but you can.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the report.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second, Commissioner Myers and a second by Commissioner Bowles to receive the report. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
The next item is item E1. This is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, who's the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, and Rob will present their annual activity report.
Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. As I always do, just want to start with a sincere thank you. We could not be more appreciative of everything you do to support sports tourism in our community. I'm here to give you a quick snapshot of what- I'm here to give you a quick snapshot of what the last six months, the first two quarters of the fiscal year have looked like in the return on investment involved in your support. I'll hit on a handful of major events and then talk about our youth and amateur events and then wrap with a recap when it comes to the Hillsborough County Tournament Sportsplex. We have been on a phenomenal run when it comes to events of all shapes and sizes. In February, we hosted the largest soccer match to ever take place at Raymond James Stadium. When over 40,000 attendees watched the greatest soccer player of all time, Lionel Messi, take the field on Valentine's Day. Just a month later, we hosted the Savannah Bananas for the third year in a row. The last two years before this year, they were at Steinbrenner Field for multiple sold out nights. This marked their first ever NFL stadium game. They now have gone on to play 81,000-seat Clemson as well as Nashville. And then this weekend, they play in Charlotte. But here, we had 65,000 attendees and they really came from, from just about everywhere all across the United States. And then I'll spend just a couple more minutes talking about the next month in terms of April with our record fourth NCAA Women's Final Four. It was back-to-back sellouts, nearly 40,000 people. I didn't bring the mascots this time around like last time. However, the event in April marked the fourth time that we've sold out. And it was also now, when you look at the history of the event, Tampa Bay and Hillsborough County holds four of the top 10 attendances of all time. But it was so much more than three games, a variety of different fan events, all of which had record-setting numbers. And then when it came to the actual viewership, we ended up having the third most-watched championship in history. So a lot of great beauty shots from our hometown that took place across the country. Over 800 ambassadors came together, did 2,200 shifts to help showcase our hometown. We had great media coverage. We actually had 930 visiting media that came in and got a chance to see our community. And there was a variety of different events. As I mentioned, a lot of great social legacy. While there was a tremendous amount of economic impact with this event, a lot of social impact. Want to commend Commissioner Myers yet again for being a part of the Legends and Legacy Celebration and getting the, the respect and recognition that she deserves for everything she has done for our community. Beyond the Baseline started in our community in 2008. It now travels to every city when it comes to the Women's Final Four. We had over 90,000 students that read over 6 million minutes leading into the Women's Final Four. So a lot of people think of just the games themselves, but that the able, the ability to use these games as a platform to help create change has been phenomenal as well. We had our Junior Journalism Initiative Press Pass where several young women got a chance to learn how to cover an event like this and then actually cover it in April. We had our Mentor Event, Connecting Tampa Bay. And then after, there's always some leftover goods when it comes to putting on a major event like this, and we quickly turn to replay Tampa Bay, which is our new and gently-used sporting goods initiative to help repurpose those throughout the community. We're not stopping anytime soon. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we welcomed our good friends at WWE back to town for three straight capacity crowds at the Yangling Center focused on Saturday Night Main Event, which was a two-hour NBC broadcast. And then, of course, coming up, we've got Stadium Series in February over Gasparilla Weekend, which that planning is well underway. And then a month later, we host the NCAA Men's First and Second Rounds with March Madness. From a hotel visitor room night standpoint, just through the first two quarters, this slide says 151,000. We're very conservative. We don't report the room nights until we have a chance to actually audit them, go through with all of our hotel partners. And I'm pleased to report that we submitted our TDC report this past Friday, and the first two quarters actually generated 177,000 room nights. So when we had to turn this presentation in three weeks ago, we hadn't had a chance to finish up all the files. But now I'm pleased to share with 177,000 room nights through two quarters. Youth and Amateur continues to be a huge part of the bread and butter of what we do. You'll see on the screen a variety of events that took place in both January and February. I'll call one out specifically, the USA Flag World Championships. With over 1,300 teams, it actually set a Guinness Book of World Records as the largest record, as the largest flag football tournament ever hosted, which is a pretty cool accolade. March continued to roll on, a variety of different events. I would just turn our attention to the difference in all the different sports that take place, from soccer to paintball, to flag football, to volleyball, you name it. If it's going to help create sports tourism, we're going to try to bring it to our community. The Hillsborough County Tournament Sportsplex, I know we had an opportunity to talk a little bit about this when you guys reviewed the indoor, the potential indoor complex and the baseball softball complex. But this facility just continues to have a tremendous amount of return on investment. 13 events through the first two months, over 85,000 hotel visitor room nights from that facility alone. And then I'll just wrap with one stat when it comes to the investment that Hillsborough County makes in our organization. Through the first two quarters of the regular TDC budget, you had contributed $757,000. We came back and said, if you contribute some supplemental dollars through the TDC, we think we can do even more. So the total contribution was a million, 1.5 million dollars, just a little over. And the amount of bed tax that we've returned through these events and those 177,000 hotel visitor room nights is over 2 million. So your investment just through six months has already paid big dividends in terms of $500,000 in additional hotel bed tax. So with that, again, just want to appreciate and thank you for everything that you do for our organization and your continued investment and vision in, in sports tourism in our community. Any questions?
Seeing no one in the queue, thank you, Mr. Higgins, for that detailed report. I appreciate you and the good work that you do.
Thank you, guys.
Move to receive the report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen to receive the report. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Next item? Thank you. The next item is item E2, and this is a special appearance by Santiago Carrada with Visit Tampa Bay to present their activity report.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, esteemed county staff, those watching. Again, Santiago Carrada, President CEO of Visit Tampa Bay. And you've already heard Mr. Mance and Mr. Higgins say thank you. And I as well would like to say thank you in a public forum. Without your support, the results I'm about to demonstrate to you would not be possible. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And on behalf of our over 61,000-plus hospitality workers in this community, and I am their spokesperson, I'd like to say thank you. Because what we do impacts their quality of life, impacts their livelihoods. And again, we feed families, but we have to provide incomes for families. So again, on behalf of them, I say thank you. I will move rather quickly. I've been doing this role over 12 years now, and I have never seen a fiscal year perform like this fiscal year. And I say that in a very, very good way. When you look at our, our factors here, our variables that determine our efficiency and effectiveness, you see Hillsborough County's numbers compared to Florida and the U.S. And January through today, we have the highest occupancy rates in hotels of the top 25 markets in the U.S. And people are paying attention. When you look at surpassing occupancy rates in Florida, which was one of the leaders in hospitality in the country, it really is saying something about what we're all doing here collectively. So you see those numbers there. Smith Travel Research, which provides data for us, divides our county into four sub-markets. Don't be confused by that East Tampa, North Tampa. What they mean by that is East County and North County. And again, you see their performance numbers. And more importantly, you see those revenue numbers and occupancy numbers that are performing in a way that we have never seen. In fact, over our first seven months of the fiscal year, each month has been a record-seter with over $100 million in hotel taxable revenue. Before this year, the best we'd ever done was four months. We're up to over seven months in hotel taxable revenue over $100 million. And compared to our convention competitive set, you see what our occupancy looks like for the first two quarters of the fiscal year. In a leisure set, which is slightly different from the convention set, you see still leading in occupancy. And then when you look at the Central Business District, which is that district around our convention center, compared to other like districts in our competitive cities, you see where our occupancy sits there. And obviously, that translates to dollars. Hotel taxable revenues, I've already mentioned, love that yellow line. That yellow line being much higher than the two previous lines. Again, never seen a fiscal year like this. And obviously, the 6% on the bed tax collection coincides with that taxable revenue. And we hire one of the best in the business, Tourism Economics. You can check them out. You can check out their credentials. They do economic impact studies for most of the large destinations in the country, if not the world. And you see references there to the 61,000-plus hospitality tourism workers in Hillsborough County. You see the total economic impact of visitors to our destination. And again, the dollars that are raised in state and local taxes beyond the hotel taxable revenue. And then we've been busy. We've booked 260 groups during this first two quarters of the fiscal year with estimated impacts of over $163 million. You see some of the groups that we have booked, those are for future years, some even out to 2033 and 2038. So you see a funnel that is full. And then you see images of our team either in-town hosting, out-of-town, out-bringing big conventions to town. And our out-of-state campaigns are doing remarkably well. We've seen huge spend from the Chicago, New York, and Philadelphia area. We see visitor spending up 4%. So again, we're doing very, very well, driving visitation. And again, you have some data there on what these campaigns that are digitally produced, they're trackable, the data is solid. We're seeing 31.2 million hotel revenue rooms and an average daily rate of $256. So very, very happy. And obviously, we continue to work with our airport and our economic development partners in bringing international direct flights to Tampa International Airport. The last that we announced just recently was Avianca to Bogota. In fact, yesterday afternoon, I did an interview with Forbes Columbia about this airline and its economic impact to the U.S. and to Hillsborough County. So very, very proud of that work. And then we continue our relationship with the Michelin Guide. We have now over 30 restaurants that are in the Michelin Guide. We had new additions to the guide, and you see those on the screen. And then we continue to work around the globe, in the U.K. and Germany, with soccer teams trying to reach their fans. Because we know that fans of teams will follow those teams. And if you're a fan of the Brentford Bees, and we're the, the stadium sponsor, those Brentford Bees fans may become Hillsborough County fans. So we enjoy those takeovers. And then we do support other ways of marketing the destination. And of course, we were the destination sponsor for the London Art Fair, where we had an opportunity to go overseas with Yala Ford, who is a renowned artist, and Dylan Perry, who is also one of our artists from Hillsborough County, and be able to, to sponsor that fair. So that concludes my presentation. Love to take any questions. And again, on behalf of our industry, thank you for everything you do for us.
Excellent presentation. Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And always great to see you and hear such good news. It's not, it's not a surprise to anyone that people want to visit our region because it is a, it is a wonderful place. One of the things that we're seeing at the airport is, on the Aviation Authority, is some falloff in air traffic. Not so much domestic, but that there's some foreign visitation falloff, particularly some alarming signs of a decline of visitors from Canada. And I'm just wondering if you are starting to see any of that. It appears that some of it has been offset by the domestic tourism market continuing to be very, very strong. But are you seeing any of that in some of, in some of your work?
Yeah. Fortunately for us in Hillsborough County, we have such a diversified tourism portfolio that on, on some occasions, for example, when we had COVID, we're able to do some things that maybe other destinations can't do because they're heavily dependent on international visitation. And when international borders are shut down, those folks can't come. So we're very, very fortunate that we have conventions, meetings, sporting events, international visitation. And what we're seeing in Hillsborough County is somewhat flat visitation from Canada. But again, we're filling that with these amazing conventions, sporting events, and domestic travel. So other communities are seeing alarming dips in visitation from Canada. For us, it's really hard because our airport is such an entry point that visitors from Canada or other places may not stay in Hillsborough County. They may go down to Sarasota, they may go to Bradenton, they may even go over to Orlando if they prefer to come into our airport outside of international, Orlando's International Airport. So again, we're seeing flat numbers. But yes, nationwide, we're seeing a decrease in inbound travel from not just Canada, other international locations as well.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, say thank you so much for just always talking Hillsborough County and the City of Tampa to, as you bid to bring in conventions and sororities and fraternities and all of that other good stuff here at Hillsborough County. It's a win-win for our county. And because of you, I mean, when I look at and go over to Visit Tampa Bay to, to help welcome someone here, it, it's a style. You know, you have a way of how you promote our city and our county. And I just want to say thank you for doing that. Because we are beaming over and everybody wants to come now, City of Tampa and Hillsborough County. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. And, you know, I was recently with my colleague from Miami at the Michelin event. And he said, Tampa comes up at every one of my board meetings. What is Tampa doing? Why is Tampa having this incredible success, these high, and this is coming from Miami. My friend that was recently promoted from, I wouldn't say promoted, transferred from Puerto Rico to St. Louis, said, you know, throughout the interview process, everyone wanted to know, do you have a connection with Tampa? Because we want to be like Tampa. So again, these numbers are, are being recognized as industry-leading, and they really want to know what the secret sauce is that we are using here to drive.
Your hair.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't think so. I, I think it's, it's reflecting what, what we all, what we all believe here and, and doing in, in the right way. So thank you. And thank you, Commissioner, for the, for the hair. I thought you were going to say it was my hand today, but I appreciate it.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to say thank you for the report and from serving, you also serve on the Commission on Human Trafficking. And I see your passion, your love for our community, your passion and love for the people in our community. And just appreciate you so much and all that you do. And thank you. And I pray your hand, whatever that is, is issues, it heals quickly.
Thank you. There've been lots of exaggerations about what happened with the hand saving a baby from an alligator, fighting off a shark, really was just separating my two dogs from having a moment. And I was the recipient of what one of them might have done to the other, just happened this weekend. But thank you. Being a humble Christian man, it is an honor to serve this community.
I'll close with thank you. Always a pleasure to have you here and to hear the great work that you're doing. I also want to commend, you have an incredible team at all levels that serve our community, and we're so grateful for them and your leadership over them. We appreciate you very much. And I'll entertain a motion to stay consistent with our date.
Move. Second.
I have a motion to accept the report by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote. We've now moved to.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carried six to zero.
We now move to any future discussion items?
Any future discussion items? Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Whistler, you're recognized.
Yes. On our county website, if you go to hfl.gov and you click Government, and then you click B O C C policies, there are numerous policies that I have read, much to my dismay. Every every single one of them. But yet again, I'm faced with the policy that is evidently in place that is not on there. So I would like to direct the county administrator to perform a due diligence task with her department heads to identify existing policies that were created or initiated by commissioners but are not listed on the B O C C Policies website. And just provide that, please, in a memorandum to our offices.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bowles? No. Anyone else? With that, I call this meeting adjourned.